Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the combined work session, regular in-person and virtual meeting for Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. The first item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by Garaford Elementary student Anthony Bell.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Mr. Bell. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Garaford Elementary School Principal, Mr. Alan Bridges, titled "The Kindness Club and the Math Tutoring Club."
Good evening Superintendent McGary, members of the school board, students, staff, and community members. For those of you that I have not met, my name is Alan Bridges and I have the privilege of being the principal of Garaford Elementary School. I am currently in my 22nd year with the Upper Darby School District. And tonight for our presentation, I wanted to highlight our student-run clubs. In the video, you will get a slight glimpse into our math tutor club and our kindness club. What makes these clubs unique and so special is that the students came up with the idea for these clubs, and they are student-run clubs. In education, we always talk about what distinguished level teaching and learning looks like, and these clubs are prime examples of what it looks like. These students are highly engaged in learning and make material contributions to the success of the class and the entire Garaford community through their participation in these clubs. Our math tutor club has helped us see amazing growth in our students, and our kindness club has added to the already rich culture and climate we have built at Garaford. Garaford is an amazing place with really special staff and extremely talented students. If you could now play the video, we could get a glimpse of these clubs.
As far as clubs go, there wasn't really a lot going on.
I would like there to be more. I feel like there's never enough opportunities, but I think that's when like great ideas happen, when the kids come up with them.
People being able to start their own thing. I don't even think I'd be able to do that. I know that like they have to go up to the teachers and ask them about what they think about the idea.
Kids need that opportunity to say like, let's put this idea in place. And then somebody that can say, alright, I'll just help you guide the ship.
One day, one of our activities led to pairing up and the kids helping each other out. So that led to the kids working together. They did awesome. And then one of my students came up to me and said, Mrs. Jutovich, I would love to be able to do this more often.
And she thought, oh, it might be a great idea to start a math club because she saw how well kids were with other kids.
We help other students with like whatever they're struggling with in math.
It's kind of like tutoring. Like we're the teachers and they're the students.
It's student-led. I offer the room and they sit down and they've built relationships and they keep going back to the same person who's been helping them. There must be a level for them to be comfortable.
Instead of a teacher saying, do this problem, do that. It's like kid to kid.
A student is just like a friend, right?
I definitely have seen improvements. Mostly their confidence, because that's half the battle with math. You need to have the confidence, because when you have the confidence, then you're more willing to participate. In January, it was going to start after the new year. It's supposed to run four weeks and we're approaching March and it's still going. So as long as they show up, my door is always open for them.
I want to provide more opportunities for kids to do that, because I think that's when change happens. And that's, a lot of kids respond better when it comes from their peers. And that's my favorite part about the kindness club, is that the students came up with this idea. I think it all started in the beginning of the school year, when we started a school-wide initiative of Caught Being Kind. So teachers had these slips and when they would catch students doing random acts of kindness, they would fill out the slip, come to the office, they would be announced, they'd get a positive note home, and then their slip would go on the board. And our board was filling up. And then in the middle of the month, I received an email from Tony Bell, and he said, Mrs. Manjoritas, your Caught Being Kind initiative has really inspired me. I want to help. I want to contribute.
I just want everybody to feel like they belong in here. Like I just want nobody to feel left out.
He just said he had a bunch of leftover, you know, unused stuffed animals at home.
About 50 stuffed animals. And as we announced the kindness Caught Being Kind winners, they would get to choose a prize from Tony's box.
My mom told me, since I did something really kind, she said, why don't you start a kindness club? And I was like, okay.
Kindness club. Sounds great, you know, the alliteration within the title.
We set up a meeting. He came. He had a portfolio designed by him, all the ideas that he wanted to put into the school throughout this year. So I said, Tony, these are all great ideas. Let's make it happen.
I didn't think it would get this far, but yeah, I guess it did.
The group kind of formed from some kids in his classroom that he knows were being kind all the time.
I wanted to be involved in the kindness club because I felt like it was fun and I wanted to help other people.
We meet once a week on Wednesdays, but they do meet on their recess time by themselves too. So they give up their recess time and they come up with these ideas. And then I just say, yeah, let's do it. Started off with just passing some notes around the building and saying positive things to people.
We're just making thank you cards for basically the staff, students, whoever you want. Just writing positive stuff on it, like have a good day and everything.
We delivered those cards, just saying thank you for all you do with the staff.
We are making braces for people and we are giving it to students, staff, members, and teachers.
Doing mini lessons in classrooms so that kids can learn how to be kind, the younger grades. Tony always says, we just want people to treat each other with kindness. That's it. That's their goal. And they're achieving it.
People have been being kinder and we're choring up some people.
At our student of the month assembly, I said to the kids, I introduced the kindness club, and I said, we're looking for people to take this over because our fifth graders won't be here next year.
I hope somebody can carry on my legacy and I'm probably going to start this in middle school.
Clubs really bring people together, you know, learn a new skill, and hopefully they just kind of continue it.
I feel like when you set the bar high for kids and you say, this is your job, this is your role, they really meet the expectation and show a side of themselves that you might not necessarily see in the classroom.
Thank you. I just wanted to send a special thanks out to Jason Taylor for making the video, my man, our founder and CEO of the club, Tony, for being here with his family tonight. And I wanted to thank, I want to thank Ms. Manjoritas and Ms. Udovich for facilitating these clubs. There's a lot of great things going on at Garaford, so it's great to be able to share a few other things. So thanks, everyone.
I know Tony's here. Are there any other members of the kindness club here tonight? Just Tony? Alright. Can everybody give Tony a round of applause? Tony, let me tell you, it's easy to be angry and to be cynical. And to be decent and to be kind takes more work. And I really appreciate you doing that work, Tony. I really, really do. I think we all do. And if we could have a Tony in every school, that would be great. That would be great. And so really, I really appreciate you starting this, okay? Good work. The final item on the work session agenda is a presentation by the Beverly Hills Middle School Principal, Mr. Wayne Remy, titled "Bringing School Spirit Back."
My name is Wayne Remy, the principal of Beverly Hills Middle School. Tonight, I am here to share with you how we are bringing spirit back to BH. When I started at Beverly Hills, we were in a unique situation. We were on the heels of returning from COVID, with the majority of students returning to our building in person. All sixth grade students were new. Many seventh and eighth grade students had never stepped foot into our building. Add to that that we were under construction on the front fields. Many students did not really understand what school spirit was in middle school. Many of the students had never watched their peers participate in athletic events, had all of the clubs and activities that are needed to, that needed to be rebuilt from the pandemic. As I reflected throughout last year, one of my main focuses was to build a strong school community, to enhance the experience for our students that they received at Beverly Hills Middle School. As we went through last year as a staff, we began to brainstorm ideas focusing on bringing back school spirit, experiences, and sense of community for our students, staff, and families. As the year began, we had our annual family barbecue. We, of course, barbecued, played games, and had a great time. At that moment, I was excited for everything we brought back or enhanced to make the school a stronger community. I now realize the barbecue was just the start. Our work to bring back the student council, PBH Rewards Day, the musical, and music programs have all contributed to making us stronger school community and helped us unite as Royals. We can cue up the video.
Coming back, you know, it was those tough years through COVID where we were virtual, or we had half our students in person, half of them virtual, asynchronous. It seems like we're all, for the most part, we're back now. And it's, it brings the joy back to our job. It makes us want to be here, and that makes the kids want to be here also.
It's a lot more energetic. It's a lot more spirited. There's more things to do in school. There's more ways to interact with people. We're fostering better relationships between teachers and students. Everything's just back and it's bigger and it's greater and it's amazing.
There's much more opportunities now, such as like student council started up this year.
This is the first year that student council is back at BH, sort of post-COVID. So there was a lot of student and administration excitement about getting that back up and running.
Having a way for the students that always come to us and, you know, ask if they can do more and if they can start a club, that we now have a body of students that can serve their community and the school and their peers with helping out and making the school a more enjoyable place to be.
We try to make the school better and try to change how people think of things and make sure people get more involved.
We plan some of the events for teachers and students. So we planned the Sweethearts Dance.
So that was really fun for the kids. I think they had a good time being able to be involved and kind of choosing decor and being involved in the planning process and also promoting it. I think we had a really good turnout because I think the kids were really invested in making sure their friends show up.
We did a food drive in December.
For the canned food drive, our amazing secretary, Fia Uden, she decided that she wanted to help out a food bank in our community. We went around and collected cans from every class, and the class with the most cans in each grade got a prize.
And we donated over 1,100 items to Murphy's Giving Market right up the street.
It's cool to see the kids get excited about it. And that's something too, that like we've kind of roped in Rewards Day.
Rewards Day happens around every end of the marking period, I believe.
It's just like a day to appreciate everyone's hard work throughout the marking period.
For example, for Fall Rewards Day, we all went on the field and played certain games.
Fall Rewards Day, the entire school was out in the front field, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, all teachers, all staff.
And they loved it. Their enthusiasm was up. The energy was up.
The energy was great.
Everything was pretty fun. I got to watch the teachers, have fun with the kids.
We had kids placed around the perimeter watching. We had it timed, so it moved quickly.
Had the potato sack races, different like obstacle courses.
We did competitions leading up to tug of war, and the winner of tug of war got to face the teachers.
I think they're more competitive than the students. We actually had a few tug of wars because I think the competitiveness was coming out in them and some were not happy they lost.
They blew us out of the water and they were very, very competitive.
And then the second one we had was indoors. It was winter.
It was like a bunch of different things everybody could do, so everybody felt included.
We had minute to win it in here. We had basketball. We had teachers running coloring classrooms. We had kids make cards for our kids at chop. Kids picked what they wanted. They got to go to what they wanted and teachers thought it was very successful. Everyone was happy. It ran really well. It's a large school. We have to keep figuring it out. And a lot of the capital improvements are starting to come to fruition as things that we can actually use and see, especially having our new field.
I think y'all did like a good job with the field and the backfield too, because we have our track now. So we could do our track and our shot put and our long jumps.
It's a point of pride for them. It's a point of pride for the school and the district that they can come here and they want to be a part of, you know, a team, or they want to be a part of a club. And they get to use these facilities, whether it's the gym or the field.
There's a lot of middle schools in the Central League. They don't have a turf field. So when the other schools come here to play, they're like, oh my God, this is gorgeous.
Personally, I think I had more fun this year for sports. Football did great. We had an undefeated season. I was nervous to play for the first time on that field. Me playing on that field is playing for somebody else. Like I feel like if I'm playing on this field, I know I have to, you know, be up to par with the field.
Basketball courts, the front gym is all redone with the Royals R logo and the purple padding. And our cheerleaders were really the hit of both seasons.
Being a part of a sports team, along with like good academics, you can also like get recognized more around the school, around other schools.
The coaches would come to us and say, wow, your basketball team's good, but wow, your cheerleaders are phenomenal. And along with all of that are the new uniforms that come with it.
They ask every year, like, can we keep the uniforms?
Want to wear that jersey, that brand new jersey with the Royals logo on it.
It's something that gets them here in school, wants them to stay here, wants them to be, you know, after school helping out and a part of a team or part of a club.
Last year, we didn't have costumes or we didn't have many lights or anything like that. It was just us acting, putting on the performance, like just us. But this year, we have the lights. Like the lighting is just so cool. Just from minute to minute and second to second, they change and the color and the spotlight even too. We have better speakers. We have microphones. We could actually play our characters better.
It definitely makes you feel like someone cares about us, someone invested in us, and I want to now invest in myself.
I think it's back. We have better programs. We have better sports teams. We have better facilities.
Everyone is really trying to do their best and try their best.
And everyone in some way can involve themselves. And it's amazing. And it only goes up from here.
My brother used to go here. He used to come home every day talking about how excited things were. And I feel like now I guess it's had the same experience.
It's bringing back the reason why, you know, students love coming to school, and it's bringing back the reason why teachers became teachers. Sports back and the play and dances and student council, all the events that we do. It's great seeing like, yeah, we're back. We're back to where we were before and we're back and we're even better.
I think BH is back.
BH is back.
BH is definitely back.
BH is back, for sure.
So of course, I want to make sure I thank Jason for putting that together. I had a vision in my eyes of what it was, and that just captures it so much better than I ever could have. I agree, BH is back. You know, we've seen a great change in the school spirit and involvement in the school community. As we move forward through the rest of the year, I'm excited for the great events, activities that we have to continue to unite Beverly Hills as Royals and look forward to taking things even further next year. We hope we can see you at our next event.
Thank you, Mr. Remy. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, I apologize to everybody for the late start. Thank you for your patience. Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedures?
No problem. Good evening, everybody. Board President Fields, got it right tonight. Just want to say thanks for coming out. I know that we have a lot of recognition here in the audience. Great job with the kindness club. Participation goes a couple different ways. If you're here in the audience this evening, you will have the opportunity to comment first, prior to going to any virtual comments. When the board decides to go through the reports this evening, they have public discussion among themselves, and then they open it up to public conversation. You can come to the microphone here in the middle, provide your name, address, and a specific report you'd like to comment on. Tonight is a board action meeting, so it's comment only. It's not question and answer. Committee meetings, which will be next Tuesday because of spring break, is a time for question and answer. So come to the microphone, provide your name, address, and you can comment on a specific report before the board takes action. For those who were in person that wanted to provide general comment, there was a sign-in sheet at the back of the room that needed to be signed by 7:30. That will take place at the end of the meeting. You'll be called up in person first, in the order in which you signed in. You have three minutes for your comment. Again, not question, comment only, and the board will take that into consideration and provide direction to the administration if need be. Virtual participants can do, participate in a couple different ways. One, they can call in to comment at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, provide your name, address, and the report you'd like to comment on, and the board will read that into the record prior to taking any action on any other reports. You could also send an email into boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbstd.org, provide your name, address, and again, specifically the report that you'd like to comment on, and the board will take that into consideration before moving on to any other reports. That's a lot. If I need to provide an update at any certain point in time, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:40 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Ms. Brittany Williams?
Present.
Ms. Mitchell?
I'm present and I can hear the proceedings.
Ms. Murphy-Mersey?
Present.
Ms. Usain? Mr. War Savage?
Present.
Mr. Des Newiers?
Present.
Ms. Glenn?
Present.
Ms. Debra Williams?
Present.
Mr. Fields?
Present. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain. Motion carried. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of February 13th, 2024, and the special meeting of February 27th, 2024 are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. Now, Director Murphy-Mersey with the report of the secretary.
Good evening. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. Now for the report of the treasurer, Director Brittany Williams.
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. We will now have the report of the student representatives from Jade McCants and Fernando Santos.
Good evening, Board President Fields, members of the board, Dr. McGary, and community members. For our March report, Jade and I visited Highland Park Elementary School and met with two classmates to talk about the recent Black History Month Fair that took place at our very own Upper Darby High School.
I had the pleasure of visiting Highland Park Elementary School this month. The school is quite large, and prior to our interview, I had the privilege of witnessing the Assistant Principal, Mr. Williams, read the book Jabari Jumps to a Highly Attentive and Involved First Grade Class. I also got to see the Principal, Ms. DeVito, in her Batwoman costume. Highland Park's curriculums have been regularly modified over the years, particularly in math and science. More hands-on learning has been implemented for students who struggle with reading or tests. Programs such as TWIG, AMIRA WAGgle, and HMH have benefited the students greatly. Highland Park makes substantial efforts to support and regulate its students' emotions and well-being. The teachers teach students how to manage and control their emotions. Social workers teach proper responses to negative stimuli and life skills. And licensed therapists help with trauma and emotional barriers. There are monthly PBIS assemblies that promote do's and don'ts for students' emotions, a chat and chew for conflict resolution, buddy teachers breaks, and other support services to provide a positive and safe learning environment. Highland Park does a great job letting kids know they have those resources. They prioritize privacy and confidentiality and involve the parents in the process. Their students have improved using these resources. Mr. Williams believes that a school can't be built without the involvement of guardians and families. He said, they lend us their children on a daily basis, and we want to communicate and be transparent. They have a weekly phone call and electronic school home folders. Parents are invited to monthly home and school association events, fundraisers, meet and greets, back-to-school nights, book fairs, reading weeks, and a Saturday brunch fundraiser that was held in January with a successful raffle. Mr. Williams is happy to be at Highland Park for his fourth year. The staff is great and gives a family vibe. Everyone pitches in when something needs to get done, and together they've done a great job keeping the school safe, tackling bullying and harassment, accepting all students regardless of background, and prioritizing academics. I saw how huge Highland Park was during the tour with Ms. DeVito. Students we passed by adored her costume, and she loved interacting back with them. I was especially struck by Ms. DeVito's comment, no matter how hard of a day or how hard things get, the kids just make it all worth it. But being invited to read The Couch Potato to the children as a guest reader in a second grade classroom really brightened my day. Overall, Highland Park is doing an amazing job, and I wish them all the best. Additionally, earlier this month, Upper Darby High School held its first Black History Month Fair, planned and organized by the Black Student Union. I was present and involved in the Black History Month Fair at Upper Darby High School, which was tremendously successful. There were booths featuring important black figures and their stories, a small business selling T-shirts, the dance team head of game booth, and there was a lot of dancing, fun, and cultural experiences. I helped with the setup, and the streamers and balloons added a welcoming and joyful experience. The dance team's booth was a hit, with many people gathered around, spinning the wheel and engaging in the games. And the dance team's performance was also fantastic and garnered a lot of praise. The poets and I did an excellent job, not only in delivery, but also in the overall meaning of our words and how they represented in black culture, which was warmly received. The BHM Fair was a remarkable event, and I hope it continues and grows into something bigger.
I sadly wasn't able to be at the fair, but however, to get very informed about how it went, Jade and I met with our classmates, Mahene Diallo and Phoez Minteray. And Mahene informed us that amidst some initial challenges, the Black History Month Fair stood as a beacon of celebration, diversity, and unity. Despite some obstacles, Mahene, along with the Black Student Union, meticulously planned an amazing event that ensured attendees a fun experience. Mahene said her favorite part of the fair was the process that led to the actual fair and seeing the amount of diverse students coming together to help out, making poster boards for the event. While Phoez said her favorite part was creating dances for the fair and performing in front of so many students. Outside of their duties, our classmates said their favorite parts were the poetry showcase, the various vendors and small black-owned businesses, and the food, which they said, and I quote, was bomb. In closing, Mahene and Phoez finished by saying they hope the Black History Month Fair becomes a cherished tradition at Upper Darby, continuing to inspire and celebrate diversity in various backgrounds and cultures within our community. They have hoped the Black Student Union will continue to work alongside students and clubs, making each future event even more remarkable than the last. That was all for our March report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jade and Fernando. I really appreciate it. Good stuff. Budget, personnel, and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now go to Dr. McGary and have the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Board President Fields, members of the board, administration, parents, families, students. You can clap. I saw you wanted to clap. You can clap after the report. They did a great job. I also wanted to point out that before I begin my report, it looked like Mr. Remy were struggling with the microphone. I saw it. And Principal Bridges gave you an act of kindness. Tony, it's working. Even for Mr. Bridges, he showed an act of kindness, helping. That's a competition among administrators when they give these presentations. I think you both did an awesome job. So thank you to the staffs, both at BH and at Garaford. There's always a healthy competition that goes on. I will let you know that former board president Brown is always tuning in and watching these, and the presentations brought into tears, especially the idea of bringing pride back to both schools, which is a big deal. So both Alan and Wayne, good job. Healthy competition. I did see that he didn't come up and help you out at all, Alan, at all. So maybe Tony, Tony can meet with Wayne, and you can help Principal Remy with some of his act of kindness. Alright? Good job, Tony, too. Really proud of you. Thanks for leading in the pledge. I have some updates this evening. I know there's an audience here. I like when we have an audience. We have a lot of very musically talented folks. I see Ms. Nelson's in the audience. Mr. Ballard, I see Mr. Bayshore is in the audience. Thank you for being here. It's rare that we see, you know, all the folks here coming out to our meetings like this, and to have the audience here with our music teachers is great. So thank you for coming out. I'll be recognizing the talent and the musical talents that are in the room. And when we do, Mr. Bayshore, obviously Doug, Ms. Nelson, if you want to come up and just be with the kids- Mr. Bayshore, obviously Doug, Ms. Nelson, if you want to come up and just be with the kids to take a picture when we do that, that would be great. Also going to talk about some staff that are in the audience, recognizing them for their excellence and their teaching achievements. And then, you know, finally, to give an update on the state budget. I've been going out to every single home and school, asking for advocacy with our state budget and getting dollars in sense that we need for our schools. So to begin my report, I want to recognize PMEA Region Six Ensemble. Several Upper Darby High School students have been selected to move on to Region Six Ensembles through the month of March. Congratulations to the following students from the Upper Darby High School for being selected to perform in the twenty-three, twenty-four PMA Region Six Band. Braheen Ahmadia and Stephen Gard, if you want to come up and be recognized. And obviously, the music teachers that are here, if you want to come up and stand with the kids, that would be great as well. Also, congratulations to Upper Darby High School students for being selected to perform in the twenty-three, twenty-four PMA Region Six Chorus. Mary Grace Kleinot, Josiah Marker, and Cole McIntosh. Congratulations to the following students from Upper Darby High School for being selected to perform in the twenty-three, twenty-four PMA Region Six Orchestra. Braheen Ahmadia, Emily Fishback, and Stephen Gard again. Congratulations. So if you could pause, we're going to take a quick moment to come around and join you for a picture, and then parents can take a picture. And before I keep moving forward, I do want to recognize our CFO, Craig Rogers, and Marvin Lee, who's in the back of the room. Wayne, in your presentation, I think it's important that we point out it's not just the athletic fields. We're fixing our auditoriums, our stages for plays, our libraries, all improvements. It was great to see the kids talk about how the lighting and the effort that's gone into it. Marvin's sitting in the back there, has put a lot of time and effort, takes a lot of pride in making sure that those facilities are being updated at the high school and the middle schools, and we're hopefully able to work through the rest of the building, so that's important. I'm going to take a pause in recognizing students. I'll come back to them and want to recognize two teachers for their earning the Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union Award, Union Award, which comes with a thousand-dollar gift that they can use toward their classrooms. You saw one of those individuals tonight being recognized at Garreford Elementary School. James Dunnehu, congratulations to James. Come on up of Garreford Elementary School. And then I know this next contestant is related to Jill Palladino and Mrs. Simone, and that is Miss Emily Stewart of Upper Darby High School for being selected to the Franklin Mint Credit Union Teaching Excellence Award. Now, before we move on, the cool part about these awards are that you're recognized by your peers and your administrators to earn these awards. So congratulations, James and Emily. You're recognized by your staff and your administration for that. I want to let you both know, too, that the IU contacted me before this becomes public. They wanted to check your background. You're clear. That's why you can have the award. Let's get a picture. And so I should probably switch things up and go through the budget information before I give out the other student awards, because by the time I do that, everybody will leave, but I won't. I'll give the other awards out to the students that are going to be recognized. For the Eighth Annual Regional High School Art Exhibition, we had several students who participated in the Eighth Annual Regional High School Art Exhibition where their artwork was on display. The Delaware County Community College Art Exhibit. Awards were given to one student per school for top artistic achievement in the work presented. I also want to make sure that we thank the Art Department Chair, Photography, Digital Arts, Art Teacher Allison Maddox for her leadership with this project. I don't know if Allison was able to make it out tonight, but make sure we pass that along. Matt, you and Brian are having a conversation, but make sure Allison is recognized, too. You're fine. You can keep going. All right. We have, you know, congratulations to this list of thirteen students. Anika Ward, Chatu Suri, Surathrusak, Samantha Mapes, Angela Hua. Come on up. Benjamin Perry, if you're here. Samira Isaac. Kennedy O'Kane. Matthew Mihon. Sartaj Saleen. Jasleen Hilario. Kiana Pugh. Zaira Winter. And I know this gentleman, he might not be here, John Peter Quillen. He just emailed me a couple times and Marvin last week. I don't think John made it out, but anybody else? Nobody else here? So congratulations. I was hoping everybody would stay. Should have done this part first, but update on the state preliminary budget. I guess at this point, I won't read from it. I'll talk to you since I've had this conversation a few times. We've been going around to every single home and school. Last, on Monday, we had a district home and school meeting. This morning at seven-thirty, we had the high school home and school meeting. I've been going around to each and every home and school to give an update and asking for some advocacy on state funding. I know some are probably going to be here asking for funding and support, and so I'm going to, in turn, say to you, I'm going to ask you to help us get that funding and support. On February, let me back up a little history lesson. I've done this a couple times, so bear with me. In February of twenty-twenty-three, there was a Supreme Court ruling. The ruling stated that public schools are not properly funded in the state of Pennsylvania. Actually, it was found to be unconstitutional, the way that schools are funded in public education. There was a thought that that ruling may be appealed. It was not appealed. What that means is schools should be constitutionally properly funded. In the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, there are close to five hundred school districts. Upper Darby ranks in the lowest one hundred funded school districts by the Commonwealth. Statistically, in the Commonwealth and in the country, Pennsylvania ranks forty-sixth. Forty-sixth, one of the, really, the lowest funding, state funding, public school systems in the United States of America, ranking at forty-sixth. That turns out to be somewhere between forty-eight hundred and five thousand dollars less per pupil spending in comparison to other wealthier, more affluent school districts. And so this all came to a head in February of twenty-twenty-three. There was a thought last year that with a new governor and some new things in play, that we would have seen because of that February ruling, that there would have been an increase in funding in public education, because theoretically, there's this talk that there is additional money in Harrisburg, a savings account that has additional funding in it, that there was thought politically that we would receive that funding. Another history lesson, for those of you who've been coming for many years, Ms. Parker, thank you for being here again tonight. School boards and school districts have to balance their budget by June thirtieth every year, no matter what. We have to balance our budgets by June thirtieth. The Commonwealth doesn't have to follow that same process. And so for the current school year, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the state did not write their fiscal code and did not pass their budget, especially the funding portion of public education, until December of twenty-twenty-three. So we went into this school year, had to build a budget, balance a budget by June thirtieth, not knowing what the state was going to give us. When the state did come out with their fiscal code and their funding of the schools, we turned out to be short by what we thought we were going to get, over seven hundred thousand dollars, in particular, seven hundred thousand dollars in special education. Follow me so far? We had to create a budget, not knowing what we were going to get, and then we were short seven hundred thousand based on what they told us they were going to give us, especially in special education. Fast forward to where we are right now. We're in the process of already building a budget for next year. We started that during, just before winter break. Budget meetings are ongoing. It's pretty stressful stuff. On February seventh, Governor Shapiro came out with a preliminary proposed budget. There is an influx or consideration of one-point-one billion dollars in increased funding. Typically, when funding happens out of the Harrisburg, it's usually by way of grants or competitive grants. This time, it's going to go in what is called basic education funding. What does that mean for Upper Darby? Potentially, that means Upper Darby could see sixteen million dollars into our basic education funding for next year. Now, the promise was it was going to be for seven years, not one year. So if you've been tuning in, which I'm sure many of you have not necessarily been tuning in, I don't blame you. The past hearings, over the past month or so, have not gone well. They have not gone well. There's been a lot of fighting about, is it going to be one year? Is it going to be seven years? Is there a fiscal cliff? Are we going to invest in public schools or not? In this proposed budget, there are increases for mental health, increases for paying student teachers. Imagine being a teacher and getting paid to student teach instead of having to pay to student teach, like many of us did. It's only about fifteen million dollars. We probably need about thirty or forty million. It's going to be competitive. That means if there are three thousand to four thousand certified teachers and only fifteen million dollars of budgeted money, we're going to have to compete against school districts to see who's going to get paid to student teach. It's a start, but should we really be competing against other school districts to have to pay to get student teachers when there's a teacher crisis? Probably not a good idea. There's three hundred million dollars in the proposed budget to help for asbestos abatement and lead abatement in the Commonwealth. We're in a better position than most school districts. Obviously, our facilities improvements are getting better. We still have over two hundred million dollars in facilities needs internally and externally here in the school district. So we're inching our way through, and there's competitive funding in this budget to try to help, because there's no longer plan-con reimbursement for school facilities projects. There's an increase of mental health supports, increase for dual enrollment, money to encourage students to go into dual enrollment. I know that's become a political hotbed for some people, but the theory is if kids can get exposure while in high school to community college dual enrollment classes, there's a higher likelihood that they're going to go on and finish either a certified program or college. If we can get them introduced, remove that barrier in high school, and get their way through. That's okay. Is that my time? Ms. Ford, is my time up? And so I guess my ask of all of you tonight, as I've been going around to these different district home and school meetings, is your help in advocating for this money. We go to, I testified hearings. I've been to Harrisburg. I've talked to state reps. Our state reps are advocating for us. Representatives Curry, Representatives Boyd, Senator Carney, they are advocating for the funding in the district. I was going back and forth with Rep. Curry last week as she was there, asking questions and advocating for this money. But your story and your impact will mean more than the words that I can give. So we also have two board members, to my left, your right, Board Member Brittany Williams, and I think to my right, your left, Board Member Kimberly Glenn, will be going to advocate in Harrisburg. And we are working on some communication we'd like to bring to Harrisburg. We like your student voice and your parent voice and our teacher voice. So each of the home and school meetings I've been going out to, we have a form that's going out, these talking points that I have. I've given them out to the home and schools. I can give them out to you. I'd like to hear from you about the impact funding has positively. If I have this funding, here's what I can do. If I don't have this funding, here's what it looks like. If you're willing to tell and share your story, you can even team up. I think there might be a common thread in this audience tonight. If you want to team up and share one story, right, and author that, we'll even help you author it. We'll take that as you're willing to share it publicly. We'll take that to Harrisburg. We'll take it to our reps. We'll take it to those opposed to funding public schools, because there's a lot of people opposed to funding what our kids deserve and the access that our kids deserve, right? So if you're willing to share your story, teacher, parent, student, we'd love to hear that story. We're also going to be looking to hold a press conference on March twenty-first, tentatively, where we're going to ask for student voice, student participation, staff participation, and some public comments, and some board members to comment on the need of holding a press conference that will be covered, that you can fight about a lot of things, and there's plenty to fight about in this country and in the Commonwealth, but fighting about funding education for kids, because I'm sure I'm going to hear from Ms. Parker tonight about facilities and where kids go to school and what that looks like, and she's right. What she may not understand is we all want the same thing. Improved school facilities, great neighborhood schools, great before and after care and school opportunities and clubs and opportunities for kids. They come at a cost, and right now, Upper Darby School District is among one of the most underfunded school districts in the state of Pennsylvania, and we're being held accountable to the same standards as everybody else without the same financial support. Board President Fields, members of the board, that does conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, and thanks again for your relentless work in this area. I really much appreciate it. I mentioned this before. We're in the bottom one hundred when it comes to funding. Our performance is in the middle, and so it's testament to the administration and the staff, some of who are here, the work you do. You get the most out of the money that is spent here, and that is critical. And if we got the appropriate amount of money, I'm sure we would be in that top one hundred, right, of districts in this state. There's five hundred school districts in this state, and there's no reason why, if properly funded, we couldn't be one of the better performing ones. Absolutely. I absolutely believe that. Let's go over to committee meeting summaries. The Education and People's Services Committee, Director Brittany Williams.
Good evening. The Education and People's Services Committee meeting took place Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, and it started with the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-seven Comprehensive Plan, which was an informational session led by Dr. Christine Kelly and Mr. Edward Marshalek. Then it went into the K-five Special Programs, Enrollment and Facilities, and that was also an informational session. And that was led by Mr. Edward Marshalek. And then it concluded with policy that required board action, which was Policy Two Hundred, Enrollment of Students, Policy Two-O-Two, Eligibility of Non-Resident Students, Policy Two Seventeen, Graduation Requirements, and Policy Two-Fifty-Four, Educational Opportunity for Military Children. And then we did have public comment, and the speaker asked if there were any references for high schools in the Comprehensive Plan, and they were directed to where to look. That concludes the overview.
Thank you very much, Director Brittany Williams. We will now have an update on the February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four Finance and Operations Committee meeting. I will read that summary. There were three items on the agenda. First was presented by Marvin Lee, School Bus Side Stop Signal Arm Enforcement System. This required board action. The district administration introduced a School Bus Stop Arm Violation Detection Program as a new safety initiative in transportation services. I have a problem with my computer. The presentation covered the background of the program, operating procedures, and the economic impact. The Upper Darby Police Department is also involved in executing this new initiative. There, this was informational, a report on annual water testing. District administration was provided with an update as it's related to the district's annual water testing analysis and results and current reporting requirements established under Act Thirty-nine of twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. The water testing was performed at all district facilities in December and January of twenty-twenty-three. Third item are policy updates that require board action. Policy Zero-Zero-Six, as it applies to meetings, and then Policy Seven-Zero-One Dot One, naming school district facilities. This here is adjusting the policy so that school facilities are, school buildings are named after neighborhoods. There was one public comment. The speaker asked about the potential for lawsuits against school districts and suggested the logistics of the townships be researched because they are not all the same. So that is the summary of both the Education and People's Services Committee meeting and the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. For the Instruction and Curriculum Report, we will go to Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Okay, so we have a couple comments, virtual comments. Do I need to read those or shall, or, Ms. Buford can read them? Okay.
Our first comment is from Mohammed S. Majib. Mr. Mohammed is located at one-twenty-two Wellington Road in Upper Darby, PA. This comment was received on the twelfth of this month at twelve-thirty-six PM via email. The comment begins, "Hi, good afternoon, honorable members, Upper Darby, under Upper Darby School District. My two children are studying, and they enjoy every year on Eid holiday." My two children are studying and they enjoy every year on Eid holiday, but I heard you are taking this holiday leave, which is very sad. Please humbly request that the biggest festival of Muslims continue this Eid holiday. Thanks." End of comment. The second comment reads as follows. The comment is from Mohammed Islam, located at one eighty-five Powell Lane in Upper Darby. The comment was received on the twelfth at four fifty-four PM via email. The comment begins, "This is Mohammed Islam, father of Abidur Rahman Shazid, eighth grade, and Shaikh Sarat, first grade. Muslim around the world will celebrate the Eid al-Fitr holiday Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, to mark ending of the fasting month of Ramadan. Please keep April ninth, two thousand twenty-four as a Muslim holiday." Comment ends.
Thank you very much, Ms. Buford. I will go back. I'll take a vote again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say aye oppose. All those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. There is no personnel report. Policy report first reading, Director Duznoyers.
Thank you, President Fields. There is no vote required for the one policy undergoing a first reading, but I will provide a brief summary of the update. The one policy being considered for a first reading is Policy Eight Fifteen, Acceptable Use of Internet Computers and Network Resources. Policy Eight Fifteen is being updated to incorporate changes suggested both by PSBA and the district. The updates include several minor revisions that were made throughout the policy for consistency with other policy documents and alignment with E-rate requirements and court decisions. And that's, the full summary is posted to Board Docs. Thank you.
Directors Duznoyers, with the second reading approval for the policy reports. Please go.
Thank you again, President Fields. The policy report second reading is in the hands of each board member and has made avail, and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
President Fields, I have a comment. To review the updates occurring on the second reading policies. The policies on the report are Policy Zero Zero Six Meetings, Policy Two Hundred Enrollment of Students, Policy Two O Two Eligibility of Non-Resident Students, Policy Two Seventeen Graduation Requirements, Policy Two Fifty Four Educational Opportunity for Military Children, and Policy Seven Zero One Point One Naming of School District Facilities. So for Policy Six, the number of votes required to pass certain types of motions is being updated according to changes in PA law. For Policy Seven Zero One Point One. As a result of the board reaching consensus during the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four Finance and Operations Committee meeting, Policy Seven Zero One Point One is being updated to indicate that going forward, district facilities will only be named after geographic locations, including municipalities and neighborhoods. And the other policies are being updated as a result of Pennsylvania passing something called the Military Interstate, the, sorry, the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. Basically, this was a movement to standardize policies for children who have a one or more parent or guardian that is a military service member. And there are changes such as a school district can now enroll the child of a, the child or the, or the, the, a student whose parent or guardian receives military orders that places them in that district rather than waiting until they actually move to the district. So Policy Two Fifty Four is a new policy dealing with children of military families, and the other two hundred level policies are being updated due to this educational compact for military children. Thank you. That concludes my comment.
Thank you, Directors Duznoyers. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Supplies report, Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for their adoption, for its adoption, pardon me.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. There is no transportation report. Director Murphy Morrissey with the facilities report.
The facilities report, the use of facilities report, and the donation report are in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Second.
Thank you for the second. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. No report for food services. Director Williams, the Finance and Budget Report.
The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. We are now at the collateral assignment reports. Delaware County Community College, no report. Thank you. DCIU, Director Mitchell.
I'm going to defer my report until next week's meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's fine. Thank you, Director Mitchell. Legislative Council, Director Glenn.
Good evening, everybody. The Legislative Council meeting was held on February fourteenth. I forwarded the summary report to all the board members via their email for their review. A few things that I wanted to mention came from that meeting. The council is working on two resolutions in effort to keep public money in our public schools. Resolution opposing PA Award for Student Success Scholarships or similar legislation, and resolution urging equitable funding and accountability in Pennsylvania public education. We're scheduled to have a legislative breakfast on May seventeenth. We also have the Spring Advocacy Day on April eighth. Deborah Williams and I will be attending that as Dr. McGary had mentioned. And I just wanted to again kind of piggyback on what Dr. McGary said and ask that everyone here, please, if you can, submit your impact story so we can bring that to Harrisburg so we can kind of help push this budget along that Shapiro has put out in place. Dr. McGary, can you please let everybody know where they can find the form and how to submit it?
Sure. I've seen some high school students here, and I can push it out to some of you to get it out to some of your peers. But we've given out the form to all the home and schools. The home and schools has, have those forms and the principals do. So I'll ask that that's shared with the principals to you as well. There's a, there's a form that's been created. I want to give, I believe, Highland Park and Ms. DeVito credit for taking what we originally put out. And Ms. Glenn, when you reached out to me, I had to do some digging to find out who created that form, and I found out that Mrs. DeVito did. We have access to that document, and we have people responding and sharing their stories, which is pretty great. I'm going to share those stories with you and Board Member Ms. Williams so that you can read those too and share those. But please reach out, share your story. Principals can share them out with home and schools and students in the buildings. And then we'll get direct access to those when that, the way the form's been created.
That was the end of my report. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dr. McGary.
Thank you, Director Glenn. I thank you both to Director Brittany Williams and Director Glenn and Superintendent McGary for going to the, going to Harrisburg and advocating for us. It's really great. I do special thanks to Glenn and Williams because you're new to the board, and so it's a, it's a big, it's a big thing to go out there your first year, and we really do appreciate it.
I want to say they made a mistake. They asked for an evening meeting to discuss it, and it almost went till ten o'clock at night, so now.
This means they're really well prepared. They're just really prepared. That's what that means, so I appreciate that. All right. Menon Hall Tyson Scholarship Committee, Director Brittany Williams.
There's no update at this time. The next meeting will be May thirteenth.
Fantastic. Thank you. Home and School, Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. We had a district-wide home and school meeting yesterday. Dr. McGary led it. And we, Dr. McGary basically went over some of the hallmarks already, but just as a review for the public. We updated all the home and school leadership on finance and operations and also stuff on Education and People's Services within those. We talked about the school bus side stop signal arm enforcement system. We also updated everyone on the annual water testing, and of course, the policy, some of which went up for board action this evening. We also covered the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven Comprehensive Plan. I believe there's still a little bit of time, Dr. McGary, if I'm not mistaken, for the public to make comment on that. Could you just speak to that for a second?
Yeah, we're probably going to get in trouble with Dr. Kelly and Mr. Marshallak, but there, it is still open for some feedback until this meeting next Tuesday. Again, as a reminder, because we have spring break coming up, the, this typical spread of meetings is different. The next meeting will be Tuesday. The committee meetings will be next Tuesday, just so you're aware. And there'll be a special voting meeting to take action on some reports, namely also the Comprehensive Plan. So you're right, there is time, and if anybody does make changes, I'm not dealing with Dr. Kelly being upset. So that's, that's the update there.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. We also went over K through five Special Programs Enrollment and Facilities Review, seeing as how our special needs population of students is growing. We do have to make best use of our existing facilities as possible, so we gave some insight to our home and schools on that. We also, there was some added commentary on two other things as well. Some conversation came up about leveraging CEPTA, continuing to leveraging, continuing to use CEPTA so that students have another option of being able to get to school and get to school on time. I did make mention of the fact that I used to be on the CEPTA Community Advisory Committee for a time. For the last two or three years, I'm no longer on there. But one of the concerns that is continually brought up is public safety on, on public transportation and how a point was made that a lot of the issues really do need to start finding a resolution in Philadelphia before any of the other outlying areas see any substantial improvement. And we're talking about liaising with the state government better on making sure that they have communication with the right police department, that they had their own police department is properly trained, all that, all that kind of stuff. And we also spoke about needing to be really innovative and thoughtful about how we approach staffing our buildings and making sure that we are on the cutting edge of whatever brings the best and most uniquely qualified talent to our district. Dr. McGary, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I like how you, there was another comment that was brought up in a question that I'll bring up related to work week and schedules, and I asked some students that we've talked about this. I know, but there's, so two, so two things came up. One, about how transportation will be utilized, and how will the district respond to the recent changes in Act. Eighty, meaning what will potentially there be considerations or committee around the hours students have to go to school and days? And so we shared with the home and school that we're willing to have committees and conversations. The union has reached out for a look at that. And what that means is in December, the state announced they eliminated, eliminated the conjunction and, meaning students don't have to go to school one hundred eighty days and meet the hours. Now it's or, one hundred eighty days or meet the hours. So some of the home and school was asking how that's going to be addressed and what that looks like. And we shared that we would be having talks and committees about working around those ideas. Certainly, no drastic change is coming as we just approved our board calendar going into next school year. I think there's just a lot of concern growing about, you know, what will be happening moving forward with those changes. But rest assured, nothing is coming drastically. Board President Fields would kick me under the table if he could. But no, we're just, we'll have those conversations. That's really, that was it. I guess that was the update, right?
Thank you both. PSBA, PSBA representatives, Director Deborah Williams.
Thank you. Just a couple of updates here. There's always a new school director monthly exchange. The next one will be held on March twenty-first at twelve thirty PM for anyone interested. We already mentioned Spring Advocacy Day. PSBA is having a student leadership scholarship. So for any students that are interested, the application deadline is March fifteenth. And then finally, I wanted to mention, and I've mentioned this for the past two months, but there's a board leadership workshop, and the next one is March sixteenth. So that's for any board members that are interested in leadership opportunities or for current board leadership as well. That concludes my update.
Thank you. The sixteenth, right? Okay. I made a note for myself. Policy liaisons, Director Duznoyers.
No updates, thanks.
Thank you. Communication, I'm going to try, Director Glenn, do you have anything? Okay. And then Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation, anything this month? Meeting this month? Okay.
The Upper Darby Arts Education Foundation didn't meet on March the fourth. They wanted to give a shout out to administration for the awesome work that they did on the PAC. They did take a tour, I believe, and talked about all the awesome upgrades that were made there. Their summer programs are gearing up, ramping up. They're, I think, like sixty percent enrolled. The Shainner Five K is also on the books for this year, and their next board meeting is in May. That's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Old business? Is there any old business from board members?
Yes, I wanted to.
Director Murphy Morrissey, please go right ahead.
I just wanted to give a brief update on the COSPA Conference. Director War Savage, myself, and Director Neil Duznoyers did go to the COSPA Conference in Dallas, Texas. It was warm and sunny, but we really didn't see too much warmth or sun because we were working inside. We just want to thank everyone for their support during the time that we were away and for covering. The, 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 the conference was really great. It gave us lots of insight on what other districts are doing across other parts of the country, not as specific to what we deal with, but similar issues like diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, teaching teachers a tool, how to use their tools, their tool belt, to combat all the issues that a lot of us are seeing around, mental health, the importance of partnerships when reaching, working with families, the science of reading, which is now the new, not-so-new old thing that's coming back again, science of reading. There was lots of stuff on that again, crisis management and putting students and families first. I think we did, we had some very other interesting workshops that people attended. They may want to speak about it, but just wanted to thank the administration for helping us to set all that up so we could attend the conference.
Thank you so much, Director Murphy Morrissey. I appreciate that. And over here, who wants to go first?
I just wanted to make a comment. I attended a really cool night at Charles Kelly, so I just wanted to send a shout out to the team there, to Mrs. Williams and her assistant principal and the other teams there. I got to see a great presentation on calming corners that they presented there. So it was really wonderful. They showed the parents there how to set up calming corners in their own homes, and they gave out ten, so at that presentation. So just shout out to that team.
Um, so at that presentation, so just shout out to that team there, to the principal there. So, that's what I wanted to say, and it had a really successful bingo night there. It was really wonderful too.
Fantastic. And, and Director Deborah Williams, you, you do a great job supporting, uh, Charles Kelly. I really appreciate it and I really appreciate your engagement there. Uh, additional, um, old business, Director Des Noirs?
Yes, um, as, uh, Director Murphy Morrissey mentioned, I, um. I was privileged to attend the COSPA, uh, twenty twenty-four conference in Dallas. Uh, so I would like to thank the district for supporting me in that. Uh, I went to, um, not one, but not two, but three, uh, different. Sessions that were all on, um. Basically, how school districts should think about responding to artificial intelligence. So, um, artificial intelligence or AI has been in the news, uh, quite a bit for the last eighteen months with, um. A, a number of new artificial intelligence engines. Coming at web-based artificial intelligence engines coming out, um, that, uh. That, um, you know, can create new material when given prompts and this, um. I guess the, the main takeaway that I got from this was that, um. The recommendation is that, uh, school districts allow both students and staff. Uh, the flexibility to, uh, try it out or test it. And see what its capabilities are, what its drawbacks are. And then the districts might want to think about putting in some guardrails, so to speak. Um, so we'll be discussing this topic more in our policy group and we'll, um. And I'll, I'm sure I'll be giving updates in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Des Noirs.
Two quick pieces of old business. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of reading to Mrs. Applegate's class at the kindergarten center. We read the book Stop and Smell the Cookies. It was first thing in the morning, so we were all super hungry. That be- that being said, the kids were awesome and Mrs. Applegate and really any teacher. Is a pleasure to read for and with all over our school district. Um, the other thing, of course, I wanted to touch on was the COSPA conference. It's my first actual. School board related trip. I come from a world of anime and video game conventions, so I had one perception.
Buzzkill? Big buzzkill, right? Not a lot of, not a lot of Dragon Ball Z over there at the COSPA conference. Sorry, I'm sorry, maybe next time.
So I had one vision of how my convention experience would go, but I dove right into the leadership track that they had down there. Because as some people know, I re- I really want to continue being a better leader, not just by saying I am. Or by making promises that I don't end up keeping or by just by appearing to be one. I really want to embrace what it means to be a leader with or without a title. They touched on that. Down in the COSPA conference, uh, understanding and capitalizing on strengths that staff have, whether they are. Admin or non-admin, support staff, le- having them lead specific projects to show some of those leadership skills. Um, two of the other interesting classes or, uh, presentations that I attended, one involved some of the law enforcement. Apparatus that had addressed the Columbine shooting. And how they had to make quick snap judgments and the various things and priorities that districts. Most especially the people who run the day-to-day, the administration have the, the, those quick. Decisions that have to be made and if they're not made in a certain order, in a certain time, then it could be the, uh, the, the difference between. Um, community chaos and saving a life, literally. The other interesting thing that I saw, um, was a school district that used a dog therapy. Uh, for their school district. They had an issue in a rural area of South Carolina, I believe. Large school district, twice as large as ours, student-wise. And, uh, they needed help with weapons detections and they were a district that also deployed. Some of the roving kind of monitoring systems that you would bring out to like a public event to catch people who are. Um, bringing weapons to school and stuff like that, so they had this dog. They partnered with the police department. They got the grant funding. And this dog, um, this trained canine is technically, I believe, certified as the, um. Resource officer for the school, so it's technically an employee of the district and. Like I said, it was originally brought in for weapons detection, but it ended up being a mascot for the district. It brought a lot of positivity just by having. Uh, an animal that has no preconditions or pre, pre notions about anyone, just that, that presence of a calming. Just a calming thing, so that was, uh, interesting. And I also did play-by-play while I was down there on my social media. I did summaries of each of the sessions and took some handwritten notes. I will type them out for the board. So I'm not sure if everyone can read my handwriting or enjoys going on social media, um, but that is the end of my old business.
Thank you, Du- Director War Savage. I feel the heat. Um, health and safety plan, we have, due to, uh, I think changes at a state and federal level, we have an update.
Yeah, and, and obviously Ed Marshlak can jump in, but basically the CDC came out with some updates, uh, to the guidance on COVID and COVID restrictions. And we're, we are still under the, uh, auspices of having to have a COVID. Health plan in our school districts because of the COVID funding that has been in place. It's not totally spent. So we're still required to keep that in play. We're simply updating our health and safety plan to, to mirror what the CDC came out with. Latest masking and changes in guidelines, so that is what our health plan update is. We're just providing that to the board, to the public. When this plan came into play, the board provided me with the opportunity to make those changes. We just want to make sure we're keeping in good standing and letting the board know and the public know that we provided changes to that plan, that's all.
Is there any new business from board members? Okay. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby school district residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in. Followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address. And present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with policy nine zero three, the time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments will not exceed one hour. I have my list. First person, Erin Gard, please come on up.
Hi, I'm Erin Gard, twenty-four thirteen, Devon Lane, one nine oh two six. I'm the treasurer of the Upper Darby Band and Orchestra Parents, known as Udi Bop. Udi Bop provides support for instrumental music programs at Upper Darby High School. Our biggest job is to help the marching Royals and indoor percussion teams in their competitive seasons. For many of us, after-school activities are some of the happiest high school memories. To quote some of our marching and indoor students. The band is literally the reason why I get up out of my bed every day in a good mood whenever it's rehearsal, football and competition day. I would never have reached the skill level I am now without the help of the people at Drumline. It has made me a better teammate, friend and person. It helps all of my worries drift away. I think every high school student should have opportunities like I have had with this program. We know you share our pride in these competitive music programs and we thank you for your support. This school board has recognized the marching Royals state championship for the past three years. We know that music learning benefits students in their academic development. We know that the kids love these programs. Each student should be able to join these programs, but each student cannot. Udi Bop's combined budget for the marching and indoor programs for this school year is over fifty thousand dollars. The directors of these programs have requested this money from Udi Bop because it's not in the music department's budget. Our budget covers staff stipends, fees, uniforms and equipment, so the teams may join in competitions. Udi Bop runs fundraisers all year, but what we earn isn't enough. So what choice do we have? To make ends meet, participants this year were each required to pay up to three hundred forty dollars in dues for the marching program. And three hundred eighty-five for indoor. We have provided written details and we'd be glad to meet, to elaborate. While all students have access to the fundraisers that offset dues, dues can still be prohibitive. Many Upper Darby families can't pay hundreds of dollars for after-school activities or don't have time to fundraise. Some can't access the fundraiser materials because English is not their primary language. Dues are not fair. Dues are not equitable. Udi Bop pays for required expenses for the marching Royals and indoor percussion teams that we believe could be covered by the school district. Lessening the burden to member families. Please let us partner with you to help the school district meet its equity objectives. So when our Upper Darby students look back on high school, their memories of Band and Drumline are the happiest. Thank you.
Susan Parker. Again, state your name and address. And I think this is the first time that.
Oh, I have not been here before.
I'm so excited.
Okay, my name is Susan Parker. I live at twenty-one oh four Green Hill Road, uh, Post Office Lansdowne, Upper Darby Township. Uh, since nineteen seventy-eight. I'm a parent of, um, ninety-nine graduate into twenty oh-two. Um, and you might wonder why I'm here, they're new b- members, but last year I came every time as a historical documenter from nineteen eighty on. Speaking only from firsthand experience with my school district and even after my kids have graduated. I still have been involved in the community. I, I really love Upper Darby. I come from a state that was the fourth highest funding public education. So when I moved here, it was a real eye-opener. Um, but, so. I see, I, investing in public education as an investment in the whole community and people who don't get that, I feel sorry for. But, so now this year I'm here as an advocate for equity. Okay, so that young man from BH who stood on that new turf field and said. Boy, this makes me feel like people care. They invested in us. I would like the people at Bywood, that's where my kids went. There are four portable classrooms there and I think. That's a shame. And so that's what I'm talking about equity. Um, and when I did the history, I may refer to some people, you new people don't know, but. That, you know, things have always been, that's the most densely populated area of the city. Row homes, you know, and the least served, so, um, I'm gonna come every month. I skipped a couple. Actually, I'm retired, but I'm pretty busy, but anyway, so to be the conscience and advocate. That you need to do something about Bywood. A Stonehurst test won college, but. When Dr. Dunlap was here, he spoke at my church and he, and the people from Cardington were here about the bus issue, that one, the safety issue. They were also told that there was going to be a school and, you know, um, the busing is very expensive. I wa- I'm walked down now with my dog, so I know all the people and the parents in the neighborhood at the bus stop. My neighborhood gets bussed. And so I've, I'm the old, old lady walking the dogs, that's what they, and so anyway, I just want to advocate that in fact. Um, the Cardington section, the most densely populated section with no parochial schools, no alternative. Um, be actually, let's have some plans to improve their grounds so they can have the pride that that young man had saying, it looks like people really. Believe in us or care about us because they invested in his football field. Um, anyway, I'll see you next month.
Thank you. Are there any online comments? Any more online comments?
There are no more, there are no more online comments.
Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks.